Now, perfect. Okay, so I will call the meeting to order at four eighteen. And happy Valentine's Day, everybody. So I got my heart earrings on from this clear, so we are good to go. And okay, so let's do a roll call of members and I don't know who they all saw, just let you call your name out if you guys wanna go in order. And I'll, I'll call you because I don't, you guys are probably all different order. So, um, Ms. McDonald.
Kate McDonald here.
Uh, Kelly.
Kelly Mackey here.
And Ryan.
Ryan Sanders here.
And Kyron.
Kairun comes here.
And Trisha, they are two are here. So I don't know who we're missing Alex, but I'm sure you'll take note of that, right? If we're missing anybody. Okay, perfect. And okay, um, let's say invocation, um, I'll read that. Um, this is our school. May peace dwell here. May the Romans be full of contentment. May love abide here, love of one another, love of our school and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts building school. And then we'll go to one point for audience to address the committee. Is there anybody? I don't see anybody else, just us, right? Okay, so seeing none, we will go to agenda modifications. Is there any agenda modifications anybody has? Nope, nope. Okay. So we will go to one point six, uh, approve the minutes from January tenth. Is that not usually it? I guess there's not a consent agenda in this one. Okay. Um, so approval of the minutes from January tenth, so everybody had a chance to review those. Good. Okay, so does anybody have a motion?
All move to approve the minutes.
Okay.
I can second that.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, any further discussion? Okay, so we'll call for the vote. I'm just gonna keep going in the same order if that's good for everybody else. And Miss McDonald.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Ryan. And Kyron.
Kairun comes, I.
And Trisha out there to I. Okay, um, where are we agenda minutes? Uh, teleconferencing, one point seven. Is that a Susan? A Susan thing?
Um, we just need to acknowledge that there's still a state of emergency, so we're still using teleconferencing. There's no vote or anything that needs to happen.
Okay, perfect. So we are acknowledging that we are still using that for the state of emergency then. And okay, so let's go to financial reports, which I'm guessing is Jim's show. Okay, take it away.
All right, we have the financial presentation for January, which is also the basis for the second interim report. Um, same information, we have to convert it into another template. We just got this information. So we have the January update today, and then we'll get the second interim report for the full council next week. But it's, like I said, same information just converted into their template. So very similar to what we were talking about in December. But we are seeing continued expansion in the expense expenses. So we're looking at about four point one million in expenses right now. Um, along with the fact that our ADA, we're probably talking in the high two thirties. So the model's at two, about two thirty-five, P one was at two thirty-eight, so probably somewhere between two thirty-five, two thirty-eight. That's two sixty down from where we originally budgeted. So at four million, you're probably thinking, you know, ADA more along um, two eighty. You know, I, I just off the top of my head, you can see that there's a significant gap at that high two thirties, two forty level versus a four million dollar budget. This year, the school has those multi-year grants and the carryover from last year rolling into this year's budget. So it kind of obscures it in the single year. But when you go to next year, it's gonna be much more of a, a typical year. So when you're developing next year's budget, experience suggests, we're talking about a four million dollar budget. At these levels, you probably need at least three hundred enrollment. Um, and then that would have to be realized in ADA to cover that four million. So fortunately, because all those other sources of funding are gonna show up in twenty-two, twenty-three, making it hard to analyze on a single year basis. What you're really seeing is the surplus is still at one ninety. But that's the equivalent of a two hundred and forty thousand dollar loss, supported by one-time money. And then the other four hundred and thirty-one is rolling into this year. So bigger picture, if you say, I don't care about that, you know, I wanna use my one time, I wanna use my role forward. The good news is your balance this year. The bad news is that won't be there next year. So if you do have a four million dollar budget, you have to have a lot higher ADA to cover that. Cash, something we've talked about all year. Cash looks pretty solid the rest of the year. Uh, four hundred and twenty-eight at the end of January, there was one last payment outstanding um, on the advances. So that'll be, well, it's probably been, uh, not yet. I was gonna say that's gonna be collected right around now. So the next check that's arriving for the school, that will be finalized from that in February. That'll all be paid off. Um, when we look at the cash projection for the end of the year, there's a five hundred thousand dollar question mark on how much cash could arrive by June and might not arrive by June. So you can see that's double the amount of cash you have right now. So fortunately, cash looks steady for the rest of the year. And then depending on timing, could get a lot stronger. So we built the model saying, okay, this money should arrive by June thirtieth. Didn't we feel really good about cash? But if it doesn't, fortunately, it still looks steady. We'll just be waiting for that rough hundred thousand dollars to arrive. Um, arts and music included in here. We bring that up, reminder that that is requires a plan approval before we utilize those funds. And the second interim report I mentioned will be converted from this. No changes in reporting out on enrollment and attendance right now. We're using the P one number roughly half the year, two thirty-eight. You see what happened to a lot of schools was seasonal enrollment decline uh, during late fall, early winter. A lot of schools are still experiencing that now. So that's why we put our expectation not to, not to beat that in the second half. Just assume the budget is gonna operate at that level or slightly worse, depending on what happens in the winter months that weren't reported in P one. Very similar update when I talk about all the different funding. Um, the four hundred and thirty is our expectation in the ADA award from last year. It's helping balance this year. And then also we're using another, you know, almost six hundred thousand dollars in one-time funds in this budget. Next year, if that is, if there's, if those funds are utilized at that level, next year you'll be down to about two fifty. And then looking into the range of one twenty or a hundred going forward. So you can see it was a very different revenue picture when we leave this year. Last year about five hundred, this year about a million, and then stabilizing towards only about a hundred, hundred and twenty in additional grant support going forward. Spenses very similar to the outlook in December. More growth um, in wage cost with the uh, resetting the rates for wages for the rest of the year. So we saw more growth there. Most of the non-wage increases were the same that we had already seen year-to-date, or we expect to see higher costs through the year. Some of them funded by specialized grants, some of them just the operational reality. I think budget was originally set towards three point seven, three point eight, based on the ADA expectation. At, because it wasn't gonna support a four million dollar budget. But we can see now the reality is, is the school is continuing to push towards four million and beyond. With the inclusion of that four thirty-one plus the one time, it would still balance out this year. But the impact would be where your ending fund balance ends. At this level, if it ended today, down at about twenty percent. Interestingly, is very similar to budget, but budget didn't include the four hundred thousand dollars. So we've gone over from that, but we've received the four hundred and fully utilized it. It ended back at that budget expectation of about twenty percent fund balance at the end of the year. Cash, ultimately, the organization would like to operate above the red line, which is in the range of uh, more than five hundred thousand. But fortunately, we knew this was gonna be a cash stress time. You can see that the dip in February is where all the advances are fully repaid. While the school is still collecting outstanding AR, but it's, it still looks stable with modest AR expectations. And then this question mark here, we have this spike in June, which we feel great if that was realized. But it's really a five hundred thousand dollar variance there, where you have both AR that we think should arrive by June, but it's always an uncertainty. And we have new state grants that the state intends to fund before June thirtieth. But again, there's uncertainty until it's realized. So fortunately, even if those didn't occur, like I said, the school stood, still should be in the range of four hundred plus, which would be stable. And then if that AR and grant started arriving in July, that would help strengthen cash and stabilize that out. The way to look at it is this four hundred, if I move back one, this four hundred boost from last year would really strengthen the cash for the school. But because the school is essentially operating at a loss, when you exclude that, that's weakening it. So we expected to see cash to start moving above the red line. But it depends on what the future operating balances for the school are. So if the school achieves beyond that fifteen percent balance, operates in essentially balanced budget, then cash should be steady going forward. But if the school continues to experience deficits, even if it's in a single year, because cash is always delayed relative to your operations, the impact of that deficit will hit cash first and return the school to cash stress. Is there any questions about the January financial?
I guess I have a question, and that's probably more just because I'm not typically at the finance meetings. When we're, when you guys are working on the budget and doing that, um, Jim, do you kind of look at what's typical, like in certain areas of what a school should be spending for their expenses per our ADA? Do you kind of help with that process?
Yeah, as, as requested.
Okay.
Um, and I think, I think it really starts with what's the history for the particular school, right? Um, so the, the real stress, I think, for Blue Oak in this budget, like I said, it's not unusual to see this budget climb towards four million. The problem is the ADA fell back to two thirty-eight.
Yeah.
So the goal, yeah, there we are, two thirty-eight. And so the goal for the school looking to um, twenty-three, twenty-four would have been approaching that four million dollar operating budget. In these types of, you know, obviously category shift, but this general, you know, you're strong in staff. And then um, equipment and supports as necessary for the students. And then rent is just very specific to the reality of the school. What does it take to obtain that site? So I think Blue Oak is um, it's a totally reasonable rent number. It's just a challenge at two thirty-eight. And that's really what the budget is looking to next year. So it's very early. But if you were to talk about twenty-three, twenty-four right now, and you say, I, I expect a four point one million dollar budget, um, that can be done, but you, you'd need higher enrollment to generate much better ADA.
So with where we are at that four million dollar budget, is that pretty? That's kind of the minimum that we need to operate at a school. I mean, so our ADA, the ADA is really what we need to increase. I mean, that's, it's sounding like that's kind of the minimum where we're at.
It, yeah, it's where you're at today. And so, so what I would say, yeah, exactly. So if you look around the school and you say, I don't see any less than this, you know, I expect four percent growth beyond this. Um, or more, um, then we have to look at that ADA. And so the two drivers are, you know, gross enrollments and then attendance rate. And reality right now, this year is that attendance rate is down. That might rebound next year. But um, we wouldn't want to overpromise that. That's been a concern for a lot of schools throughout the state. So if you operate in the range of ninety-three percent, you've gotta look at that off, trade-off in, in, in um, enrollments and total cost. The enrollment needs to be slightly above three hundred. What does that do to that four point one million in such a way that it's balancing out? And then the one time, it's still assuming a benefit of about two hundred and fifty thousand next year in additional funding. And then that is gonna start disappearing into, you know, one hundred's a lot more marginal at a four, four million dollar budget. And so there is some support next year, but it's stabilizing. Like what, what ADA is realistic for the school? And then building out that roughly four million or whatever it has to be aligned with that ADA reality.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any other questions or comments?
I apologize. I'll throw in real quick too. And part of the reason for that is if we look beyond this five hundred thousand dollar spike, you could see how the school was having to operate below that fifteen. That's kind of the warning. If the budget isn't balanced, you start dipping below there again. And then you're in that perpetual zone of having to worry about if you have enough cash. Whereas a school with as much history as Blue Oak should feel confident that they can operate above that. Stop there.
Thank you. That was helpful. Any other questions, comments? So Jim, did you, so I see the balance sheet detail at two point one point three, did we go through age payables as well? Did you go through that? Was that part of the report? Yeah.
Yeah, they're just included. They're just for review, so.
And all of that. Okay.
And payables are basically, they're basically nothing.
Yeah.
Pretty much all AP is paid, but it is a check-in to see, oh, Jim said we have cash. Is it because we didn't pay any bills? There's only one bill that's outstanding, and that's because they have a deal that is not due for two more months. So it's just gonna show up for two more months, but otherwise, payables are paid on time.
Okay. And, okay, so the next, if there's no other questions or comments, then next would be two point two point of cell transactions. And this is something we need to accept, right? Maybe, yes.
Yes, and those, those should included um, in the packet.
Yeah, they were. I said, no, we need a motion to accept those.
We need to approve the financial reports.
Yeah. Thanks, Kyron. Thank you. Okay, so um, if there's no other comments or questions, um, is there a motion to approve the financials?
I move we approve the financials. This is Ryan Sanders.
Ryan. Um, is there a second?
I can second it.
Thank you. Okay, so first and a second, any further discussion? Okay, so I'll go ahead and call for the vote. And now you all are in different spots because there's something on the screen. So, and so, uh, Ms. McDonald.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Ryan.
Ryan Sanders, I.
And Kyron.
Kairun comes, I.
Perfect, thank you.
And Susan is here also, I.
Oh, thanks, Susan.
Yep.
Okay. The motion passes, and we will go to two point two, right? That's not part of the monthly report. Okay, so, and we need a motion to accept these, right, as well? So is there any discussion or comments, or is there a motion to accept the um, point-of-sale transaction check register?
Um, I think we typically, remind me if I'm wrong, I think we typically do the financial reports all together.
Okay, so the, okay, perfect. So it's not just the monthly reports, the whole thing?
Yes, I believe so.
Credit card statement, all of it.
Yes, and, yeah, and then the credit card statement is new, but I think like we've always done with the POS two, we just do it all in one. So I just pulled it up, so we all knew it was here.
It was part of the. It seems like the credit card is going well then. That's helpful, because that's new. Yeah, but. Okay, so then we'll go to three business. Um, so three point one, accepting donations. And so we have two donations. We just accept this as a whole, right? We just accept.
Yes.
The whole, we need a motion for that.
I move we approve, this is Susan. I move we approve the donations.
Perfect, thank you. Um, do, is there a second?
I second that. This is Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay, first and a second, any further discussion? Okay, so, um, I'll call for the vote, Ms. McDonald.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Uh, Ryan.
Ryan Sanders, I.
Kyron.
Kairun comes, I.
And Susan.
Susan Dibinigini, I.
And, oh, me, I have to vote too, right? I guess. Tricia out there too, I. I'm not on my own list, so, okay. Um, okay, updated classified pay scale. So I know Vicky said that this was something that you guys were working on. So I don't know if there's any discussion or if there's already been discussion about it. Is this the first time you guys are kind of reviewing it?
So the change here on the pay scale is really under the classification um, explanation at the bottom. To um, update some positions, for example, the bonus coordinator um, was the had a different title. So it's just updating it so it actually reflects what we're actually doing today. Um, the only major change is the HR coordinator um, was not a position in the previous year, and we have made it um, its own position. Now it's still part of a combined position, but um, we, we're seeing a clear uh, need for that um, work, especially as we're dealing with some medical issues and so forth. So um, that's coming forward. So not a lot of change here, just wanting to make sure that we are clarifying um, the actual titles of the positions that we're currently using and that they match the pay scale.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions about the updated pay scale or comments? Okay, so is anybody would like to make a motion to accept it?
I can make an emo- a motion to accept um, the classified pay scale.
Perfect, Gil.
I second that.
Perfect, thanks, Ryan, right?
Yep, yes, sorry.
That's okay. Um, okay, so if there's no further discussion, we can call for the vote. Uh, Ms. McDonald.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly.
Kelly Mackey, I.
And Ryan.
Ryan Sanders, I.
Kyron.
Kairun comes, I.
And Susan.
Susan Dibinigini, I.
And Trisha out there to I. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so next, three point three, after-school education and safety grant application.
Okay, so um, you have approved uh, us to apply for the grant. And I have done the calculation and turned in the um, application. So um, this is just really for your awareness and acceptance. It's for sixty-four thousand for next year.
So is this just the application or they've approved it?
This is the application.
Got it, okay. Don't get too excited yet, but.
Right, well, the excitement is that it's for sixty-four thousand.
Yeah.
And the, we're not getting too excited because we don't know until it comes back as to whether there's even money in the budget for them to give it to us. But we have a good application and a good program going, so.
Good. Thanks for putting it together.
You got it.
Okay, any other, any comments or questions for Susan before we vote to accept it? Okay, anybody would like to make a motion?
Remove that we accept this application.
Thanks, Ryan.
Sure.
Um, this, any second? This is Tricia, I'll second. No. Um, okay, um, any other discussion? Okay, so I'll call for the vote. Ms. McDonald.
Kate McDonald, I.
And Kelly.
Kelly Mackey, I.
And Ryan.
Ryan Sanders, I.
Kyron.
Kairun comes, I.
And Susan.
Susan Dibinigini, I.
And Trisha out there, out to I. Um, Kelly, did I call on you?
Yeah, I was like a little coughing, but Kelly Mackey, I.
Okay. Thank you. And, okay, e-therapy contracts, three point four.
So um, at the end of December, our um, school psychologist um, moved on. She had only been with us part-time and um, anyway, and so we thought we had another school psychologist lined up, but she at the last minute, due to some personal reasons, could not take the job. She was moving up from Sacramento. So what we were able to um, work on in the meantime is e-therapy. And this will be primarily for doing assessment plans for special education students. So um, they came uh, highly recommended to us for um, from the Sopa and um, have all of the appropriate uh, abilities to work for us that we need. So we are asking that this would be the contract we would work with for the next um, four months. We do have, we believe, we already have somebody lined up for onsite work for next year. Um, we also still have the ability to confer with our school psychologist who worked for us through December um, in any major issues. So I would like to ask that we approve this um, for the interim situation for um, primarily for assessments. Um, and we're looking at a cost of less than ten thousand dollars for the rest of the period.
Is there any questions or comments? There isn't. I have a couple. And so it's only through the end of the school year, it sounds like, but in the term it says through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. But I don't know if that's also have to do with the confidentiality period that it talks about.
Right, well, it's, I mean, we could continue to use them, but we, it's a um, per assessment contract. So if we don't use them to assess anybody, if we don't use the time, we don't pay them anything.
Okay, so we only pay for what we use.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, and then um, is this in line with kind of what we already had in the budget, or is it more expensive than what we were budgeting?
It's actually a little less expensive than what we have in the budget.
Okay, perfect. That was, that was it. That was my question. And anybody else? Okay, so is there a motion to accept the contract?
I can make a motion to accept the contract between um, e-therapy and Blue Oak.
Thank you.
This is Ryan. I second it.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Uh, Ms. McDonald.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Ryan.
Ryan Sanders, I. Ryan Sanders, I.
Kyron.
Kyron Comes, I.
And Susan.
Susan Dominican, I.
And Tricia out there too, I. Okay, so three point five faculty compensation for travel and training.
So um Maggie and I have been reviewing um policies and processes. And one of them that hadn't been looked at for quite a while is the amounts that we. Compensate for travel. And Maggie and I found ourselves going, well, how much do you think it should be? Maybe it should be this, maybe. And so um maybe it should be that. And so we did some research and found um a schedule that is the. Um, HR department for um California um ca.gov. And so we went ahead to um to. Request that you review and potentially adopt that policy as our own. So Maggie has pulled this together. I'm pulling that information off of the state policy and. Um, I'm not asking you to approve this tonight. I would prefer you spent some time reading it and thinking about it, and then we'll present it again uh next month. So if you have any questions now, or if you want to hold off till next month.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I just definitely have not had a chance to read it, so I would appreciate the next month's conversation.
Yeah, the only thing I saw was the reimbursement per meal seems low for me, like breakfast is seven dollars. Like, I don't think you can get breakfast anywhere for seven dollars, but maybe. So that would be my only, I mean. Comment, but I mean, if we're not making these numbers up, we're pulling them from somewhere else, but.
And we do have um the option, Tricia, to, to make changes. We're not required by any means to follow this. This was um. For Maggie and I, it felt like let's put out what we need to do, and then we can discuss it within this committee as any changes.
Okay, yeah, I just, it can be expensive when you're traveling for work. I know I just got back from my trip and. My breakfast was most definitely not seven dollars at, when you're staying at a hotel and everywhere else, it's, you know, more expensive than just normal, so. And you don't want, I mean, you don't want the staffer, anybody to be able to, to pay for that out of their own pocket, so. And, okay, if there are any other questions or comments? We can, perfect. So then we will go to three point six. Um, adjust March. BOFC date, with all your dates for your meetings. So it's changing the date from March seventh to March thirty-first, it looks like.
So I, I'll let um Alex address any questions on this one.
Um, I essentially just noticed that the original schedule that we um approved, I made the finance committee and charter council committee schedule before I made the parent council. Uh, schedule, um since they start a little later in the year than um when I was doing this over the summertime. Um, so I noticed that I, we had to move it for spring break, and I moved it up one week instead of back one week, and that. Would make it basically have a back-to-back meeting, finance committee, and then parent council meeting in one day. So, um. I just, I guess I put this on here just for thoughts, um ideas, if. Um, if we wanted to push it back to after spring break, we'd also have to bring this to the charter council to push that back one more week. Um, which I think is doable. And that way we aren't running into multiple meetings, late-night meetings in one day, but. I just thought I'd bring it here for approval or denial or whatever. Um. So yes, I will answer questions if you have any.
In the past, we've done them like back-to-back, I think, and or moved to a Wednesday. Is that right?
Um, I know we've done that for special, like charter council or special finance meetings. I don't know that we've done that with parent council before, but. That is a good suggestion. I didn't think of, but we wanted to move that to Wednesday, March eighth, instead of Tuesday, March twenty-first. Um, I don't know if there are any other pros and cons that anyone can think of for those different dates.
The only thing I could think of is to make sure we have the financial done before the charter, so we can approve anything the financial committee is giving us.
Right. Right, so if we did move it to March twenty-first, we'd have to also move the charter council, just so it stays in that rhythm.
Yeah. But I think either way is fine, personally. Anybody else have a thought or care? Everybody's good with whatever, Alex.
Yeah, either of those is totally fine with me.
So the preference is, do we move it to a Wednesday, or do we just bump it a week and then bump charter a week?
Sounds like less moving parts to do the first option, yeah.
Wednesday, yeah, move it to a Wednesday, less people to. I would agree, probably. Alex might agree to trying to get the charter council to rearrange their schedules somewhat difficult.
Yeah, the less things we have to touch, the better.
So moving it to March eighth would work for everybody here and doing it at four fifteen on Wednesday, March eighth, right, Alex?
Yep, would, do we need to vote for that, since this is, since this was voted on earlier in the year? We need to vote to change it.
I would guess so. So I'll make a motion to move the March seventh. Uh, finance meeting to Wednesday, March eighth at four fifteen.
This is Ryan Sanders. I second that.
Thanks. Any other discussion?
Thank you. I am sorry I touched this uh clarifier earlier, so thank you everyone for that.
Not a problem. Thanks for noticing it now. And Kate, I'll call for the vote, Miss McDonald.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Ryan.
Ryan Sanders, I.
Kyron.
Kyron Comes, I.
And Susan.
Susan Dominican, I.
And Tricia out there too, I. Thank you, thank you. Okay, um, three point seven audit report.
So our audit is usually due in December. There were some concerns, as I've shared before, and additional. Um, issues that came up relating to um the independent study, and the auditors felt they needed to. Look at those samples and review that process. This has, they have never looked at it before, so with the changes that came with COVID and the, and. And so on, they became aware they really needed to look at it, but it was at the very last minute. So. They were asking us to do it. We were working, now I'm trying to do it the last week and, or the middle of December, and it was just too tight. So they. Asked for an extension, and we worked with Chico Unified on the extension, so the audit is now complete. It is in your hands. We have no exceptions, no concerns.
Well, that is good news.
It is good news.
Okay, so we just need to accept it.
We just need to accept it, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for Susan before we go to motion? Okay, anybody want to make a motion to accept it?
I move that we accept the audit. This is Ryan Sanders.
I can second that.
Perfect, thank you. And any other discussion? Okay, uh, we'll go for the vote, uh, Miss McDonald.
Kate McDonald, I.
Thank you. Um, Kelly.
Kelly Mackey, I.
And Ryan.
Ryan Sanders, I.
Kyron.
Kyron Comes, I.
Susan.
Susan Dominican, I.
And Tricia out there too, I. Thank you, thank you. Okay, almost there. Um, three point eight, letter of intent to renew the lease.
Uh, so we had talked last month and looked at the lease um and had our proposal to the lease. Uh, they did come back with some adjustments through our negotiating team. And so now we're in the final process of accepting the lease. Um, there is the major, there are two changes. Um, one is, you know, that we had hoped wouldn't happen, but did. One was an increase in um the rent increase for this year and the same, yet staying the same for next year. So meaning. Twenty-three, twenty-four is at five point five percent. Um, and then twenty-four, twenty-five at three per- percent. And though that's an increase higher than what we wanted. It is still significantly less than the COLA of eight percent, which our previous lease agreement agreed to. Um, and holds us at three percent increase next year, um, which with inflation is, is a good number. Um, the other thing is that they um do not want to give us an, an easy out after one year. Um, and ta- talking to Charity, she felt that that was um Charity Bay, who's working with us on the location. She felt that that. Would likely, we would likely not be ready to move next June at this point. So um. So I agreed to present the lease to you as a two-year lease with the two different levels of. Of increase over the next two years.
Thank you. Um, anybody have any questions? So just, so for, if you can clarify, Susan, so the next year will be a five percent, and the year after that is three percent?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Or five and a half percent for.
Five and a half.
And then three percent for the following year. And again, that's less, remember last year, we got, we did five percent with a twelve percent COLA. And this year we'll have an eight percent COLA, so it feels, um, it feels reasonable.
Yeah, and I would say, and, you know, I work in real estate and property management. I would say that's reasonable. I mean, we're doing ten percent rate, rate increases in some places, so. And. Now, the rent isn't forty-eight thousand dollars, but, you know, so it's a much bigger chunk when you're doing that, but.
Yeah.
Okay, um, if there are other discussion, if anybody has a motion to approve the. Um, letter of intent to renew. And that's a big one. And. So I'll make a motion, this is Tricia, to approve the, approve the LOI to renew the lease as presented.
I'll second that, Tricia.
Thanks. Any other discussion? Okay, so I will call for the vote, Miss McDonald.
Kate McDonald, I.
Kelly.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Ryan.
He left.
Oh, oh, he said he had to be out at five. That's right, okay. So Ryan's out. And Kyron?
Kyron Comes, I.
Susan.
Susan Dominican, I.
And Tricia out there too, I. Thank you. That's not a fun one, so. Okay, um, three point nine, executive director's report.
Um, not much of a report today. The only thing from the financial standpoint is we have been able to hire the last aide that we were. Um, scheduled to um put in place, and she's on site as of this week. So. Um, that allows us to support, fully support first grade and better support. Um, second grade and eighth grade, so we appreciate that. I know that's all um part of that temporary increase for COVID and the need to. Um, figure out how we're going to respond long-term to those things, but um that's where we are today. That's all I have for my report.
Thank you. Okay, so that's the end of our agenda. Um, I appreciate you guys putting up with me feeling, and Vicky just couldn't be here today, so she asked if I would step in, and so here I am, so. Um, there's nothing else that I'm missing, right? So with that, then we will adjourn, and you guys can go enjoy your Valentine festivities. Fill the world with some love today, so.
Thank you, Tricia.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you, bye.
Bye, bye.